And a very happy Wednesday to you at 12:08 in the west, talk radio 790 K A B C, the John Phillips Show, talk radio 790 K A B C, broadcasting live from the Morongo Casino Resort and Spa Living Room Studios, which today is drying out from the storm. Mr. Randy Weigs at the sports desk in Culver City.
John, I have a new nomination for best bucket full of cliches, and this time it comes from San Francisco mayor and Tony, Tony, Tony fan, London Breed.
It's important for us to remember who we are, not as others defined us, but as what we know we are, and to roll up our sleeves in order to get the work done for this city.
I'm surprised we didn't get at the end of the day.
We did not, but it's, she does say that one a lot, almost as much as Adam Schiff, but that's right up there with a Rob Bonta.
Every type of leadership is about meeting the moment and rising to the occasion, and this is what's required. And so we're stepping up and getting it done.
You see, this is what happens in a one party state. Instead of the remedial ones getting weeded out, they're front and center. 800-222-KABC is the telephone number, 1-800-222-5222. We have a big show for you today coming up later on this hour. I'm gonna get into the controversy going on right now between Larry Elder and the RNC. We had Larry on the show yesterday, the big debate for the Republican presidential primary in 2024 is gonna happen later on today in Wisconsin. I'll be on CNN, by the way, later on this evening to give my take on just exactly what went on at the debate. But Larry, who has met all the qualifications that the RNC put out, is being left off the debate stage, and he's now suing the RNC, saying he belongs up there on the stage with everyone else who doesn't have a chance.
Well, and there might be an extra slot up there because apparently the North Dakota governor Doug Bircham hurt himself in a pickup basketball game.
Was he playing with Charles Barkley?
So Larry's going on interviews, saying, maybe I could slide in there.
Did someone throw an elbow? How did he injure himself playing basketball?
Probably going for that slam dunk.
You know, when I first started working at K A B C, I used to play in the Saturday Basketball League, and I eventually had to stop because I kept injuring myself so regularly, I'd show up to work looking like someone beat me up over the weekend. So we'll have more on tonight's RNC debate coming up later on this hour. I think I know why the RNC did what they did to Larry, and I also know why they're eventually gonna lose, and they're gonna have to back down and put Larry on the stage. But first, the only thing filthier than our mailbag is the LA City Council, specifically whenever they open up the LA City Council for public comment. And Randy, today is yet another day things went off the rails.
That's right. It was another day that was full of people that were all the way pissed off, but this time on both sides. Because the city council is about to vote to approve the contract that Karen Bass negotiated with the LAPD to include $15,000 incentives to hire more cops and steal cops from other agencies because we're at a historic shortage of police officers in a city of 4 million people. And so the people that are scared to death of all the crime that's going on in Southern California, they made their voices heard at the city council meeting. But of course, the people that hate the police, they also made their voices heard at the city council meeting. And some of those people also have similar interests with the people that hate Kevin De Leon.
None of them have indoor voices.
Let's start with a guy who got kicked out and banned from the city council meetings for like six months, Richie Sangerco. He finally made an appearance again, and he had his target sights straight out for Mr. KDL.
Hi, yes, this Richie Sangerco from People City Council. This is actually my first.
That's not a thing, by the way.
Council, this is actually my first time back in council chambers this year. Council member Hernandez, first time seeing you. Thank you for your leadership today this morning.
What did he do to get banned from the LA City Council? How bad do you have to be? If they allow these people who curse them out to show up week in and week out, what do you have to do to get a technical foul over there?
I'm not 100% certain, but I believe this might be the guy that charged at the members of the city council when Nury was still there. Or this could have been one of the guys that got dragged out for disrupting the meeting so many times that Kirkorian finally had to enforce his rule 12.
For your leadership today, this morning, but I'm even happy to see you, Mr. Paul KKK Corian.
Okay, he brought his own laugh track.
I wonder who wrote his material.
Okay, item 20, I'm sorry. KDL, this is a motion from KDL money for Summerfest, but it's actually giving money to the bid. I'm just surprised KDL's racist ass is still here. You know, just like the money going to the bid, he's gonna have money, tough time raising money for his race, his reelection race. And when you lose Kevin, you know, how are you gonna pay for those brothels and coke houses?
What?
Wow.
Money's gonna be low, bro. We know you got debts, too.
I just had to get that out there because anytime someone alleges that Kevin De Leon is indebted to the hookers and coke game, I gotta know about it.
Well, isn't there an entire boulevard in Oakland that's dedicated to that?
Why, yes, there is. Now, I also had to play you that guy because you need to know who that is, because throughout the rest of the meeting, he constantly interrupts people that are voicing their opinion that, yes, we should fund the police, and Paul Kirkorian keeps Janice haunting him.
That's your final warning.
And I was surprised to see a familiar face up on the podium, Angela Marsden, friend of the show, owner of the Pineapple Hill Saloon and Grill in Sherman Oaks. We did a live event there a couple of years ago. She came to express her support for the police, and she got booed by the riffraff. Would you like to hear the exchange?
Let's hear it.
I am here on behalf of supporting a pay raise for the police officers. I am a small business owner.
I heard Richie Sangerco's voice. Wait, wait, I'm sorry. No, you need to stop for a minute. I heard Richie Sanger.
Did you hear there's a baby in the background?
Yeah, one of the ones that curses them out week in and week out always brings his baby and attaches the baby to his chest while he's screaming curse words at the council.
That one's Jason Reedy. That's the guy that got into the fight with Kevin De Leon. Everyone's got a connection to KDL.
I heard Richie Sangerco's voice. You're not gonna be warned again, or you'll be removed for violating rule 12. You know the rules. There's a member of the public trying to express her views to this council. You already had to speak. You will not disrupt the meeting. Neither will anyone else, or you will be removed.
So that's his second time Janice haunting.
That's your final warning.
That microphone sounds like it's halfway down his esophagus.
All right, let's see if Angela can speak now.
Generally, I'm a small businesswoman. I represent many small businesses in my area and patrons that come in. Crime is off the chart. I've had a bartender attacked. I've had my cooks threatened by MS-13 gang members. I have been attacked. There has been robberies. We need a police presence, even cops on bikes that are just watching over the area. I cannot afford security. I am barely making it as it is. I don't understand why there's such division here. The police are human beings too, okay? They are trying to work.
Wait, someone laughed at that?
That was more of a cackle than a laugh.
Oh, boy.
The police are human beings too, okay?
Hey, these people that hate the cops, who do they call when they get mugged?
They're the ones doing the mugging generally.
They are trying to work their job. A server that makes minimum wage with tips makes more than a police officer.
Oh, the one who did the cackle was the stupid lady that sings the Kevin De Leon songs. I know all of these people now. I spend way too much time on this.
We need to find out if she has a job. How could you show up to every single meeting and have time to come up with lyrics for a new profane song to sing to Kevin De Leon every single week?
I think I actually know this. I think she's a barista.
Your time has been paused. Hold on just one second, please.
Now they're gonna pause Angela again while she's in mid rant because of the hecklers.
Miss Segura Ballinger, please do not interrupt this meeting. This is your first formal warning.
It is disheartening to see the division. We can do all things. We can take care of the people. There's little girls in this room. If that little girl is harmed, raped, or killed, I have been threatened, I've been followed. Do you know her first line of defense is? These officers. We have to pay them enough. There's not enough officers on the streets. We need them.
That was refreshing to hear at a city council meeting.
Yes, and that crowd definitely needed to hear those words. But what you see going on at these meetings is they have a heckler's veto, because it is extremely difficult. If you've ever had to speak publicly at a council meeting, or a school board meeting, or before a civic group. In fact, I had to do this one time. I was flown into Dallas to give a speech to a group in Dallas, and it was when California was still shut down with COVID-19 restrictions, and nobody could meet indoors. Well, in Texas, they could. So they flew me in to talk about what life was like in California. And there was some QAnon person who showed up and sat in the very front row and had commentary for everything that I said. And the room was shaped in a weird sort of way. It was almost like a V, not a great setup for a public speaking situation, but it was set up like a V, and I was at the center of it. And I couldn't hear anything off to my left or off to my right. All I could hear was the QAnon guy sitting in front of me. And he would not shut the hell up. And he had commentary for literally everything I said. It's impossible to keep your train of thought. It's impossible to keep your timing. It's impossible to remember your words when you have someone in your ear talking the whole time. It's part of what makes doing cable news so frustrating at times. When you're interacting with the host, or you're interacting with another guest, and there's a producer in your ear giving you notes, or telling you to rap, or whatever, it's hard when you're hearing multiple voices all at once. It's why I can't watch The View. It's just a bunch of different people crowing nonstop. For Angela Marsden to go up and to take this point of view, a point of view that many of us share, and present the idea in front of the city council, and have the hecklers going off nonstop 24/7 behind her, good on her for following through with it, because it's virtually impossible to do. They just shut you down.
And right after Angela got done, the heckling began again. So it's time for Janice Han warning number three from Paul Kirkorian to Richie Sangerco.
Sir, sir, do not disrupt the meeting.
He got a Willy Wonka on that one.
Sir, sir, do not disrupt the meeting, or you will be removed under rule 12. I'm going, Richie Sangerco, I don't want to hear your voice again. I'm just telling you, I do not want to hear disruptions of this meeting. I'm, I'm gonna have silence before I call any more names.
That's your final warning.
He sounds like a substitute teacher at a rowdy high school.
Now, Angela wasn't the only level-headed person there. The next speaker was also someone that wanted to support the police contract, and also had some choice words for Nithya blamed the Prius Ramen, and of course, Unices Hernandez.
Because we are the defund the police people, right?
So the time for a violent revolution is officially upon us, and it's being led by you, Unices, and you, Hugo, and you, Nithya Ramen. On June 12, 2020, when LAPD had 10,000 officers, Nithya Ramen tweeted, "Defund the police." Three years later, three years later, we have over 1,000 officers less. We're at 8,967 officers. At this point, in a state of emergency, LAPD should get whatever they want, need, or desire to keep us safe. Anything that they want, need, or desire, LAPD should be getting right now. We're graduating 30 cadets out of the academy a month is 360. We're losing 300 a month. We're losing 300 a year through attrition. Guys with a lot of stripes on their arms are running away from this department like their hair is on fire.
Good for these people, these good Samaritans, for showing up and letting their voices be heard.
Unfortunately, most of the people speaking were more like this.
I think that people that try to use children, particularly in this room, and particularly today, with my children being here, as a defense of why we need to expand the police, probably don't have a great analysis about how the LAPDs use to target youth in this city, particularly black and brown youth. So they should go themselves. Speaking of going themselves, how you doing, Mr. De Leon?
He sounds like a pleasant man.
Now, there was one noticeable absence at the LA City Council meeting. Hugo Soto Martinez was not there. He instead held a press conference outside the doors of the city council, because he does not like the idea of adding to the police contract, because we're desperate for officers. And here's what he had to say.
By the end of this contract, the starting salary of a police officer will be $97,000.
That seems low.
Yeah, and you know what? We should pay them a lot more than that, because they have jackasses like you to be their bosses.
There, there's a vacancy crisis here in the city of Los Angeles, and we need to solve homelessness, too. Ask yourself, if $97,000 was the starting salary for a mental health or homeless outreach worker in the city of Los Angeles, how different would our city look?
Well, some of those homeless outreach agencies make so much money, they can run for office, like Nithya Ramen.
And Katie Hill.
She could support three salaries. She could support three mouths with that salary.
Well, she could support three, never mind.
There are over 22 city departments with higher vacancy rates than the LAPD. That's including critical departments in charge of youth development, jobs, jobs, job development, parks, trash pickup, street and sidewalk repair, and so much more. But only the LAPD gets record setting bonuses, incentives, and raises. By the end of this.
There we go.
Well, there's a reason that they're getting the raises. And the reason is, who wants that job? We live in a city that has a district attorney who will not prosecute criminals. We have state laws that allow criminals to have free rein over all the rest of us. We have a city council who will not back the cops up. We have a mayor who seems like a nice person, but so far has been a massive disappointment. And my guess is, she wouldn't back the cops up. She's not for defunding the cops, and so far she supports this contract, but she really hasn't been tested in any kind of real way regarding backing up the police when they enforce her rules and laws and regulations. So the jury is still out on that one.
And so far, the recruitment efforts have not worked.
That's right. Why would you be a police officer in Los Angeles if you can be one in Newport Beach? Why would you be a police officer in Los Angeles if you can be one in Upland? Where you know you have a city that's gonna back you up. You know you have a city that has far less crime and chaos than Los Angeles. Look at the city council meetings. I remember when I was a child, and we would have to go in front of the school board because I was getting some kind of award, or had to go in front of the city council because someone was being honored for something. You would show up, and it was one of these things where you dressed a certain way. You didn't just show up dressed in a T-shirt and flip flops. You dressed up. These are elected members of the city council. And everyone had some kind of decorum. And if you didn't have some kind of decorum, not only would they kick you out, but everyone in the room would look at you like you were on drugs. Now, it's like the Jerry Springer Show. In fact, Jerry Springer is more under control than the city council, because at least he had Steve Wilco as his muscle.
That's what we need.
But this is the city that we deal with on a regular basis, on a day-to-day basis. And they wonder why no one wants to work there. It's not just that no one wants to work for the police department. Remember, Randy, when Karen Bass came out and said that we had all of these unfilled positions in sanitation and transportation and other departments?
Oh, there's vacancies across the board.
No one wants to work there, because they know what they have to deal with. If you want to make your city more inviting to live and work and operate a business, then clean it up. Enforce the rules. Make sure that criminals get arrested and prosecuted. Make sure your city looks clean. They're not interested in doing any of that, and you can throw as much money as you want at the problem. We've thrown money at homelessness. We're now throwing money at city employees. Money will take you a certain, certain amount of the way there, but it won't do the entire trick. You have to bring law and order back to your city if you want people to want to live there and work there. It's as simple as that. If you'd like to email the show, you can do so at johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. That's johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. And Randy, if you want to take the podcast of the first half hour of today's show and send it to your friends and family out of state to show them the kind of chaos we have to live with on a day-to-day basis, that's easy to do.
That's right. Just go to kabc.com, click on podcasts, go to the Apple Podcast app, iHeart, Spotify, search for The John Phillips Show, hit subscribe. You can download all the episodes. You can, of course, search for The John Phillips Show on YouTube as well as subscribe to the playlist there. There are plenty of ways to listen. In fact, I've told you people so many times about this. This is your final warning.
That's your final warning.
Which means I'll tell you about it again in an hour.
It's Woo Wednesday.
Ric Flair.
It's Woo Wednesday. Yeah, baby. Woo, 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 woo.
Tonight is the first GOP 2024 presidential debate. It'll be happening on the Fox News Channel, live from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
And it'll be on this station.
That's right. We'll be carrying it live right here at AM 790 K A B C and online at kabc.com. Of course, former President Donald Trump will not be participating, as he is 50 points ahead of his nearest opponent, Florida Governor Ron DeSantis. Instead of participating in the debate, he'll be doing a sit-down at the exact same time with Tucker Carlson. The big controversy right now going on in Wisconsin is whether or not Larry Elder will be on stage. The RNC says that Larry didn't meet all of the requirements. Larry said he did. Yesterday, we had Larry on the program, who made his case that the RNC is illegally excluding him, and as a result, he's taking them to court. He has said today that if they don't resolve his dispute soon, he's also gonna file a complaint with the FEC. I went through all of the stories regarding this controversy this morning, and I read what the RNC has on their website, and I think I've been able to figure it out. Here is what the RNC wants. They want you to have 40,000 contributors. It doesn't matter if someone gives you a dollar, if you give $10, $100, $1,000, or you max out. As long as you have 40,000 unique donors, you have met half of the qualifications to be on that stage. The other thing that you need is you need at least three different polls that show you at 1%. If you have three different polls that show you at 1%, and 40,000 unique donors, boom, you're in. You have a podium on that stage. The RNC says Larry doesn't qualify because one of his polls was a Rasmussen poll, and they won't accept that because they said the Trump campaign paid for it. Rasmussen says that's not true. The Trump campaign did not commission the poll, and they are a pollster that the RNC has cited before in the past as being a legitimate poll. So what happened, and why is Larry being kept off the stage? Okay, here's what I came up with. Many news organizations commission polls so they have something to write about. You've seen this happen time and time again. Fox News, they work with a pollster. They put out a poll. The LA Times works with a pollster. They team up with the University of Southern California, and they put a poll out. The Washington Post, the New York Times, CBS News, NBC News, NPR, all of them work with different pollsters, and some of them team up with universities or newspapers, and they put it out. One of the things that many of those polls did when they polled their respondents is they did not include the names of all of the candidates. And they don't do this for a bunch of reasons. One of the reasons is they don't regard them as viable, so they think it's a waste of time and a waste of money. Those polls are not cheap, especially the ones that have live humans calling you. The second reason is that if you have a laundry list of candidates, those phone calls last forever. Because not only do you ask them, who are you voting for, and then you go through the list of candidates, you go through each individual candidate. Do you have a positive opinion about Ron DeSantis, a negative opinion about Ron DeSantis, a very negative opinion about Ron DeSantis, a very positive opinion about Ron DeSantis, or are you neutral? And you ask questions like that about each candidate. Well, if you have 16 candidates that you're including on the list, that call is gonna go on for an hour, or over an hour. And if that's the case, people just get tired and they hang up, and you have very low participation. If you have very low participation, that means you have to pay the people in the call center to call more people. The more people they call, the more expensive the poll is. And when you have people hanging up right and left, if it's a certain type of person that won't sit on the phone for an hour, let's say you're in your twenties, you're working, you've got dinner on the stove, you've got kids fighting in the background, and you don't have an extra hour, and you keep hanging up, or young people with young families keep hanging up, then you're gonna get a poll with a skewed result, because it's gonna skew to older retired people who have more time on their hands. So you screw with the methodology of the poll, and you get a skewed result. So what these organizations do is they just leave Larry's name off the list, and they leave other names off the list. So that even if you are a Larry supporter, if, let's say, CBS News and their pollster is calling you, and you want to say that you're voting for Larry, there's no mechanism when they call you to let them know that you're voting for Larry. It will show up in the results of that poll as other. And that doesn't do Larry any favors for getting on that stage. So then you have to say to yourself, okay, well, you know, the RNC hates the New York Times, and they hate NBC News, and they hate the Washington Post. Why are they giving these organizations the power to keep people off the stage, which is what they're doing? So what Larry needed to get on that stage, because he had the 40,000 unique donors, is he just needed a pollster, any pollster, didn't matter which one, to include his name on the list. Because to get to 1% in any poll, that's like one person or two people with that, with the response saying they're voting for you. You could put Randy's name on the list, or my name on the list. We'd end up with 1%. People would think that I'm from the mamas and the papas. People would think that Randy, I don't know, maybe they went to high school with a guy by the same name.
Or they thought a porn star was running.
Whatever the case, you could always find one person who's willing to say they're for a certain candidate. It's a multiple choice test. Think about being in high school and taking multiple choice tests, and you don't know the answer, you just randomly pick one. Maybe you pick a name because the name sounds good. Maybe you pick a name because it reminds you of someone you know. Whatever the case may be, you could put Barney on the poll, on the call, and Barney would end up with 1%. So all Larry needed was for some pollster somewhere to include his name. And Rasmussen did. Now, the question becomes, who paid for the poll? Larry didn't pay for the poll. Rasmussen said the Trump campaign didn't pay for the poll. Apparently, it was some consultant who commissioned the poll, who used to work for Larry at some point in the past, and used to do work for Trump at some point in the past. That was the guy that commissioned the poll. So the RNC is saying, we're not gonna count this, because someone in your orbit was the one that paid for this poll. And Larry's saying, all I needed was for any of these other organizations to include my name, and I would qualify no problem. So what they're doing is they're giving the New York Times veto power over who's on that stage. My guess is, Larry is gonna end up prevailing, and he'll end up on that stage. Because the RNC doesn't want their voters figuring out that they gave the power of God to the New York Times and CBS News and NPR over who qualified as a legitimate Republican candidate. That being said, I'm not sure I know how many people are gonna watch tonight's debate. debate. Because whenever you have a candidate that's 50 points ahead of everyone else, that race is not competitive. Anything more than double digits is really not particularly competitive. If you're talking 10 points, that's one thing. You could come back from a 10-point lead. 15 points, okay. I think Pete Wilson was trailing Kathleen Brown by 15 points when he was running for reelection, and he was able to turn it around and win. But once you start getting in the 50-point range, that's a blowout. That's a blowout, and if you're Trump, you would be a fool to show up to that debate and participate in it because you'd just end up being a pinata. So tonight's debate is gonna be like going to a spring training game in February. You're not gonna see anyone who's gonna end up being the Republican nominee in 2024 unless something happens to Trump. If you go to Tempe, Arizona, and watch the Angels play spring training, you're not gonna see a whole lot of names that are gonna be on opening day, on the roster on opening day, in the lineup. You're gonna see the people who take over for Mike Trout in July when he gets injured. That's who's playing in spring training in February. Why would you put your regulars out there and risk injury? You don't. You put the minor league prospects out there so the scouts can see what they can do. They get to play against major league-level talent, and if someone does something that impresses you, you make a mental note of it, and if and when you need to start calling in the reserves because people start going down with injuries, you hearken back to your memory of what life was like in February in spring training. That's what tonight's debate is going to be. You have people with a bunch of different agendas who are on stage. Some people are delusional and think they're gonna win. Other people are promoting a specific cause. Others are running because they want to get their name out there for consideration to be a cabinet secretary or an ambassador if Trump were to win another four years. The agendas are different, and they're all gonna collide on stage tonight. I would imagine that Chris Christie is going to go after Trump very aggressively. I would imagine that if your role in the race is to kiss up to Trump, you're going to have an answer for every charge that Chris Christie throws at Trump, and you're gonna be the one that mixes it up with him. If you're also trying to curry favor with Trump, Ron DeSantis is the one who's polling at number two, you probably go after him, too. So after tonight, it's gonna be very clear just exactly who's in whose camp. At this point, you have candidates who you know are not going to endorse Trump when they drop out. Chris Christie is at the top of that list. But you have other candidates who will quickly throw their support behind President Trump once they drop out of the race. When you have a race as lopsided as this, if you're a candidate who is on the ballot, and you decide that you can't raise any more money, you can't continue to be a viable candidate, the person you endorse is the person who you think is gonna win because they can do something for you if they do win. And tonight, you're gonna see just exactly who is planning on getting out of this race pronto, and my guess would be that almost all of them, with the possible exception of Christie and Pence, are all gonna get behind Trump the moment they get out of this race.